Today is November 8, 2021. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join us in the class. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we'll move into announcements from board members.
I was in California.
I'll just say a few things.
You can start.
Yes, welcome back. I'll just briefly say a few things. And I don't know, Jim may have what I have on my list, but the first thing, I just wanted to acknowledge our girls swim team. We have state qualifiers in the 200 freestyle relay, the 200 medley relay, 50 free, 200 free, and the 500 freestyle. Alex Reyna set the Section 1 meet record again and set a new school record in the 500 free. Alexa also set a new school record in the 200 free with a 150.13, which is really good. And that qualifies her for All-American consideration. And she is also joined by Sal Moreno, Grace Ricky, let me just pause, Grace Ricky, Kristin Casellas, Saskia Ackman, and Lizzie Torado in representing White Plains at State in Ithaca, November 18 through the 20th. Congratulations. Thank you for that. I also wanted to acknowledge the football team. Our high school football team had a good year. We won our division. We're moving in the right direction. I think our student athletes were very encouraged. They played hard, and I really just wanted to acknowledge their efforts on the field and congratulate them as well. I also had opportunity to attend the UN Environmental Conference where Dr. Rica spoke. It's really so important, you know, to take care of our environment, and it's so good that here we are taking all the steps that we can to really protect our environment and have it in good condition for our students as they grow up in this world. I also went to the UN flag raising, and to my surprise, one of our students sang acapella, the National Anthem, and I was floored at the talent of our students. So, anything else? Anything else to speak?
I'll mention a, sorry, no. I attended the New York State School Boards Association Conference, which they were hoping to hold in person in New York City and canceled about six weeks before. So instead, they had a Zoom version, which was sort of compressed into a half day. But they had some very interesting sessions, conversation with state ed, and talked about the deputy commissioner talked about being more service-oriented, and that the Board of Regents and SED are really looking to partner with the field with, you know, different educational entities and school boards. Another session on pandemic learning needs and approaches to address student learning loss, some session on SEL, social emotional learning, and then a session on government in the sunshine and open government, you know, laws and open eating laws. So that was really interesting. I attended a webinar on elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding, and they talked about how the funds are being spent and the impact on the states and on the schools. White Plains High School Little Theater, they did a production of Bystander, 9/11 documentary commemorating the 20th anniversary of 9/11, and it was quite effective and quite chilling. Also, U N Day, appreciate Dr. Rica's representation and talking about our sustainability and green initiatives here in the district. Tended the White Plains School Boards Association Roundtable, sharing with other school districts about our equity work, and got into the Church Street Special Needs and PTA Council meeting.
Yeah, I forgot that.
Busy, busy PTA council meeting.
Just to recognize our PTA council for everything that you do. I have to say, I'm really proud of the work and how you report it all out. I mean, it's, I always travel, and I say, no one beats our PTA council. So thank you, and thank you all for what you do and continue to do for our students. Anything else? I think we're good? We're good.
Well, yeah, that's a good one. A little over 19:00 this morning.
At least it's not Buffalo. Yeah, at least it's not Buffalo.
I don't know if I know that. I love my dog.
And this is not the first, Ricky, to be at State either. Okay, next, we'll move into our public participation. Will there be any tonight? The Board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum limit of 25 minutes. Please respect the privacy and dignity of all students, as the administration would be happy to address any concerns of a private matter privately. Will there be any public participation tonight? Okay, okay. Next, we'll move into our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, President Eller. Good evening, everybody. Post Road is in the house tonight. Thank you so much, Post Road, for being here. We also need to give Post Road a big shout to the Girls Who Run Club that just started up, and they just competed in their first 5K across the river, did a great job. Everybody did a tremendous job. Mrs. Sorio, thank you so much, and, you know, for the entire, the entire team supporting the ladies, and great job. What were the times? No, I'm just kidding. This is wonderful. Wonderful, wonderful. I do, I also, and I know we have our student liaisons here as well from White Plains High School, and I promised them that they're going to go first. I just also, and I know you're probably going to tip the hat to our other fall sports, just wanted to give a shout to cross-country, outstanding season this year. Soccer, fantastic, again. Tennis, tremendous work on the courts. Our volleyball team, I think they ended up being 19 and 1, or 19 and 20 and 2, something like that. Great effort, right? And I want to thank, of course, Mr. Cameron, our coaches, our assistant coaches, our trainers, everybody who works so hard, but most importantly, our students and our parents and guardians, because, you know, win or lose, the one thing that I'm always confident about when our kids compete is that I'm not going to get that dreaded phone call that, for one reason or another, our student athletes didn't do the right thing and were acting in an unsportsperson-like way. You know, and that's something that I am so proud of, that no matter where we are, no matter what's going on, no matter what bad call the ref makes, our kids always do the right thing, and our coaches always model what the expectations are for our behavior. So congratulations to all of our student athletes. We're going to recognize them, of course, next month in December, and look forward to that as well. And without further ado, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our student liaison. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Rica, board members, and members of our White Plains community. My name is Riley Falvey, and I'm a junior at White Plains High School. I'm co-treasurer of our White Plains Student Organization, along with Taryn Becerra. Taryn and I are so honored to be here with all of you tonight and to share some positive events that took place in our school district this past month. Ridgeway Elementary School had a successful and fun Halloween parade on Friday, October 29th, for all students in grades kindergarten through 5th grade, and they even invited the parents as spectators. It was such a fun way to celebrate Halloween and for the students to show off their awesome costumes. At Post Road Elementary School, which I actually graduated from, they started their community meetings. The first one took place on October 8th. Outdoor community meetings are one way they address social emotional learning in their school. It's a great opportunity for them to gather as an entire grade level to promote and foster school values. The meeting, the first meeting focused on the definition of a community, celebrating the diverse community that they are and naming all members of their school who contribute to making it such a safe and joyful place to learn. Post Road also had a very successful outdoor costume parade on Friday, October 29th. They also hosted a PTA-sponsored outdoor Halloween bash on Sunday, October 31st, which was well-attended and enjoyed by all. As Dr. Rica just mentioned, the Post Road girls on the run team did such an amazing job at their official 5K, which took place on Saturday, November 6th, at the Rockland State Park. The girls did an amazing job and should be very proud of themselves and know that we are also very proud of them. At Eastview Middle School, which I also went to, they continued their traditional Halloween celebration with their Fred Dressler Walkathon on Friday, October 29th. The Walkathon had complete participation, and the students had fun walking around the track and making new friends. The Walkathon was such a success. They raised over $13,000. Team Albany took the lead and raised the highest amount. Eastview also formed their 2021 to 2022 student government and elected officers to fulfill the roles of president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. The Eastview students have participated in three lessons regarding the mind-body connection. The first two lessons were designed to meet the challenges of understanding the brain and discerning growth and fixed mindsets. The third lesson will focus on communication and problem-solving as 6th graders increase their social awareness and academic responsibilities. Lastly, for Eastview, John Shepherd came to visit them on Wednesday, November 3rd, to record some of the students as they perform for their Veterans Day tribute video projects. This was a great way to honor veterans for Veterans Day this upcoming Thursday. Lastly, for George Washington, they have a new assistant principal. Mr. Joseph Anatovia began on November 1st. George Washington welcomed him with signs and positive messages displaying throughout the building. He arrived just in time to leave professional development sessions on November 2nd. His experience and positivity will complement the work in responsive classroom equity and social emotional learning. They are so happy to have him on board. Hello, everyone. My name is Taryn Becerra, and I am the co-treasurer of the General Organization at White Plains High School, along with Riley. For Mamaroneck Avenue School, MAS is celebrating and learning all about Ally Month. Students are learning what it means to be an ally and ways to ensure that we have an inclusive school community. The MAS Equity and SEL Committees combined and met to discuss current topics and created goals for the year. This past weekend, the MAS staff played a friendly kickball game against their families. It was a picture-perfect day with lots of staff, students, and families cheering, and the winner of the game was the wonderful staff. For Highlands Middle School, Highlands hosted their Fred Dressler Walkathon, which was highly successful, raising over $8,000. To demonstrate Halloween spirit, the students and staff also dressed in costumes while they completed the walk. The Highlands Modified Football Team finished their season with an impressive record of 6-0. The Tiger Offense scored a total of 190 points, while the starting defense gave up only two touchdowns all season long. The 7th grade students went to Bear Mountain on October 7th, enjoying a beautiful day with team-building and academic activities. Church Street Elementary School, for Church Street Elementary School, the school community came together to harvest vegetables, herbs, and seeds in the school garden for a farmer's market. Every grade level had a task, from harvesting, washing vegetables, to creating flyers, pricing each item, decorating vegetable bags and bagging. Parents did their part as well by helping to set up and manage their farmer's market. Their collective efforts raised $375 for the Direct Relief Organization. This year, they are looking into planting and growing some flowers to sell in the spring. Stay tuned. Church Street School Champions also acknowledged Bullying Prevention Month. Each week, they focused on what they can do to build a positive learning community. At the end of the month, they engaged in a school virtual read aloud and shared on a school-wide padlet ways that they would continue to be bucket fillers and good digital citizens at school and in their communities. Church Street School also received a $10,000 donation from the White Plains Subaru through the Adopt the Classroom organization. They will be getting a continuum of robots for students to code in grades K through 5. They look forward to getting the robots by the end of November. For Rochambeau, their Spirit Week was a huge success. Students and staff participated in daily themes such as Wild West Wednesday and Jersey Day. Rochambeau recently celebrated Red Ribbon Week, educating our student body about the dangers of using drugs. Students and staff wore red ribbons in support of this cause. On Wednesday, November 24th, they will have their first Coffee House of the Year during lunch. Students and staff will be invited to display their writing and/or musical talents during this program. For White Plains High School, where Riley and I currently attend, our fall sports that have been previously talked about are coming to an end with remarkable seasons. Our swim team, which I am proudly on, has concluded our season with many state qualifiers. Six of us will be traveling to Ithaca on November 18th to represent White Plains at the New York State Championship. Alexa Reyna, my teammate, has also set two new school records in the 200 and 500 free. White Plains volleyball achieved 20 straight wins. They made it to the section semifinals and unfortunately lost to North Rockland, ending their 2021 season with an amazing record of 20-1. White Plains football beat John Jay, taking the title of league champions. We lost to Arlington in the first round of the playoffs, ending the season with an impressive record of 5-4. As for inside the school, we have new, modern furniture all around the school where students can sit and relax at lunch and in the mornings before class starts. To show our Halloween spirit, we had a Spirit Week from October 25th to 29th, including Decades Day, Tropical Day, Dynamic Duo Day, Color Wars, and Halloween Day. On October 29th, we hosted a trunk-or-treat where the clubs at White Plains High School handed out candies to the elementary school students. Similar to Rochambeau, we also celebrated Red Ribbon Week this past week in support of the cause. And that is all that me and Riley have for tonight. Thank you all for your time, and I hope you enjoyed our report on all of our schools. Thank you.
Riley, Taryn, you're impossible to follow. You are so good. Thank you so much, not only for that really great update, district-wide update of the amazing things that are happening in our school district, but also for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come and spend some time with us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. And do not feel like you need to stay for the remainder of the night. So thank you so much. Yeah, absolutely.
So for Post Road, I have to tell you, I went to school on a track-and-field scholarship. So at some point, I'm going to really have to connect with the girls that run. I think that's really exciting. So keep me in mind if you need anything.
My last practice is tomorrow. Welcome to the conference.
Where is it?
It's at Post Road, from 3:30 to 5:00.
Okay, okay. I'm going to try. I may have a meeting, but I'll try. But just, if you, just keep me connected. That would be great.
I was there, watched, and I was exhausted just by watching the effort. It's really great. I also wanted to just, and I was remiss, Field Academy did great as well this year. Sorry about that, for getting initially. Also want to thank the PTA for Halloween. We are merging back from COVID land, and it's nice to be able to see the activities that our children enjoy, and our parents and guardians enjoy too. It's fantastic, and it couldn't happen without all of your support. So thank you very much. We had a long set of reports last month. We don't have that tonight, but we will next month, December, which is a very, very important meeting. And just mark your calendars, and as a reminder, tonight is Mrs. Schoenfeld's penultimate meeting. We are going to celebrate Michelle, and I know she looks, she ducks her head every time I say, we're going to celebrate Michelle next, next month in December, and we will be in B1, right, Michelle? B1 at the high school. Fantastic. Holiday season is upon us. For those celebrating, wishing you a happy Diwali. Of course, Hanukkah is, the first night of Hanukkah, I think, is the weekend of Thanksgiving weekend, and then we will roll, and then Happy Thanksgiving before that, and then we'll roll right into the winter holidays as well in December. I do want to draw special attention and recognition to all of our veterans who have served our country and protected us over the years in White Plains City School District, as well as our employees, our colleagues who have served, and we will celebrate, of course, them on Thursday. Do want to just give you a quick COVID-19 update. We have a reopening committee meeting on Wednesday. That will kind of be just a sort of an update, but that meeting will be posted and available for everybody to review on Wednesday as a county update. We met with the county executive this morning and the local school districts, and the good news is that we continue to see the trend of flat COVID-19 numbers countywide persist, which is great. You may have heard George talk about this afternoon in his update, we're about almost close to 90% vaccination in Westchester County, which is, which is fantastic. Now, of course, we're at the advent right now, the beginning of the pediatric vaccination opportunity, and we are very fortunate in our partnership with the County of Westchester Department of Health that we're the first that will actually be offering the opportunity for parents and guardians who are willing and able for their children ages 5 through 11 to begin the first round of the two-course vaccination that'll take place on Wednesday at the Department of Health here in town. We sent a link out for folks to sign up this afternoon, and I want to say, within about 90 minutes, the 270 slots that were available for the initial round were already taken.
Yeah, until I signed up, my kids said 3 o'clock, and there were about five spots left.
Yes, yes, so it was, it was quick. We're going to, again, offer more opportunities for our children. We know that pediatricians are backed up. We know that folks are having difficulty, you know, securing appointments, so we'll do everything we can on our end. But I do want to thank the county for allowing us to partner with them. This is really a pilot. They need to find out the timing for children, certainly, you know, inoculating children en masse is different than inoculating adults, who want to make sure that the kids are comfortable, that their parents and guardians are comfortable, so they're working all that out, and...
There is a history, however, of inoculating children en masse, going back a generation ago. The polio vaccines were done in schools traditionally, and the children got that, and it was either in the auditorium or the gym, the kids lined up and got their shots. And for those who are not available, cannot get it either at their pediatrician or in, through the Department of Health, they are going to be offered at many of the pharmacies locally. So there is plenty of vaccine available. The dose is smaller than the adult dose. The timing is similar, but it's very, it's incredibly exciting.
Yeah, very, very. And, and, you know, that leads in, Doc, that leads into the next, the conversation. People were asking questions about two topics, really, one, the so-called test-to-stay program, which is when a contact or potential contact is somebody who has COVID-19 can test and then avoid quarantine. This is something that the county is exploring right now, as well as the state. The second piece is the question that, you know, is always out there, when, when will masking change? When will the guidance of masking change? We don't know the answer to any of those questions, however, conversations that we've seen at CDC and, you know, are linking that, that off-ramp to vaccination efforts as well. So, you know, I know many moms and dads, guardians have reached out to us. They're very, very interested in their children being vaccinated, so we're going to do as much as we can to get those opportunities, make them available for everybody in our community.
Dr. Rica, I just wanted to share something that I've heard this afternoon from, actually from a client who works in a daycare center. There are so many people out there who feel that children are not at risk for this disease, and that, you know, certainly the younger ones. This woman told me that they recently had a five-month-old and an 11-month-old come down with COVID. So, you know, this disease is unrelentless. It's, it does not show prejudice. It does not care about age. It does not care about anything other than the fact that, you know, it's just going to keep attacking anyone who's not protected. So, you know, all we can do is, is keep trying to urge friends and loved ones who really think that this is a hoax and don't think this is for real. The children are starting to show signs, and to me, that's heartbreaking. Not that it wasn't before, but a five-month-old with COVID, you know, that truly says something.
Thank you, Rose. Yeah, everything that we can do to protect ourselves and our loved ones is definitely what we should be looking to do. And if anyone has any questions or concerns, you know, they should absolutely reach out to their healthcare provider and have those conversations immediately. So we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted with those vaccination opportunities as they come up. The last thing I do want to remind everybody, if you're going to be traveling for the holiday season, continue to protect yourself, continue to take the appropriate steps to keep yourself and your loved ones safe. And we learned a lot that we already knew, but I'll say it again, washing your hands, keeping your hands out of your face and your eyes, making sure that you're, you know, staying home if you're not feeling well, and taking care of yourself. Sleep, food, water, all those things go a long way to keeping you well. So please make sure you do that, particularly when you're traveling. And for everybody in our community, of course, happy, very, very happy, healthy Thanksgiving. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. So next, we'll move into summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
Second.
Do we have any questions?
I, uh, letter M about the extended day.
Talk a little bit about that.
Four thing. Let me just get to...
Uh, 7M.
7M.
7M?
Yeah, federal, yeah.
Learning loss programs.
Yeah. Yeah. The American, the federal.
The Federal Rescue Program.
Absolutely. You got it.
You have.
So these are, these are the programs that are going to be supported with the American Rescue Plan Fund set aside, and these are the extended learning opportunity programs that, right now, we're still awaiting final approval from the federal government, but we want to be ready to immediately hire and move right into the programming once that approval comes through, which is why it appears this evening on the agenda. This is, these are going to be the opportunities for our students to extend and also fill in gaps that may have occurred during the remote and hybrid days of the pandemic. You'll recall that there's a requirement for a 20% set aside of that allocation, and we are hoping that we'll be able to move right into that as quickly as possible once we receive that federal approval. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move into our individual action items. We have the first one, the APPR Resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President and Superintendent of Schools to execute the 2021 to 2022 APR Implementation Certification Form for its Annual Professional Performance Review for Classroom Teachers and Building Principals, covered pursuant to Education Law Section 3012-D and Subpart 30-3 of the Rules of the Board of Regents. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in...
I'm sorry, was that, that was tabled last year, right? The APPR, and now, so this year, we're under, we're working under the assumption that it will not be...
We're working, we're working under the assumption that the, the emergency order expired, which, that allowed that to be tabled, but I assume, or I am assuming that we're going to continue, we're going to see some adjustments to how that's going to be applied this year too. Yeah. Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, for... Next, we have for board policies, the second reading and adoption. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorize, oops, sorry, I'm in the wrong place. Sorry, sorry, sorry. The recommended, we have the recommended adoption of the following policies, Student Fundraising Activities, number 5251, and Revised Purchasing Policy, number 6700. May I have a motion? This is the second reading. We had the first reading at our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the CSCA Side Letter of Agreement on Security. The recommended action is the approval of the CSCA Side Letter of Agreement to temporarily outsource and/or contract out the work of the title of Security Assistant. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just make a quick comment on that. I would like to thank President Del Hessenberg and also all the members of our CSCA Professional Association for their partnership here. We were very, very clear and continue to be very clear. We met with our security folks last week to let them know that this is a stopgap measure to provide assistance to them and the school community, and that the school district and the Board of Education, not only do we value them as integral members of our operation, but that they should know that in no way, shape, or form is this temporary stopgap intended to move in a direction of fully outsourcing our security staff. We're also moving our folks who are in forward-facing positions like exterior entry points into the inside of the school, and we're going to use the folks who we're contracting with on those exterior points, so that our folks are with our kids, especially at the outset. We are looking to have about five people at the high school to assist and two additional folks at Highlands to assist as well. So, that, just so that everybody understands. Thank you very much.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the leave of absence of Tara Daly, Social Studies teacher, and temporary appointment as interim Assistant Principal of the Middle School Highlands Campus, effective November 9th, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, replacing Mr. Eaton. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do you have any questions?
I'll just, you know, stay on the side.
No, can I just say that, just definitely talk to my daughter. Highly recommended. We had a great interview the other, last week, and good luck in your new role.
Yeah, and I was to get.
I'd say, yes.
Yeah. Let us vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Stella, congratulations, and it starts tomorrow, so. But, you know. I do. Yeah. You know, and just, again, thank you for your willingness to support the Highlands community and, you know, lend your talents to our children and team. It truly is a team effort, and we really do appreciate it. Congratulations.
Okay. Next, I think our last item under individual action items is the recommended approval of the support for trustee Cheryl Brady's nomination as a candidate for the position of NISBA Director Area 10. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Any questions?
Cheryl, can you just explain what that is?
So, NISBA is the Midwestern State School Boards Association. Area 10 encompasses Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland, and so the position is to serve as a representative reflecting the needs of the component school districts in Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland. So, I'm very excited about the possibility of serving in that capacity and representing our component school districts to NISBA.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think it's great that we've got a member who's able to do that for our district. And, you know, Cheryl for a long time, personally, 13 years on the board.
14.
14 through 13.
For you. Okay, yes.
I think we have known that you will serve and be diligent for the children of White Plains and of the Westchester, Rockland districts that you'd be serving. So, thank you for stepping up.
I appreciate it, and I'll still be here on this board.
And Cheryl, it's my understanding that it's a nomination.
Yes, so this is a nomination. It's a nomination process. So, each candidate needs to receive at least five letters of nomination from component school boards by a certain date. Once that happens, if there are multiple candidates, then there will be candidate statements that will be distributed, again, to all the component school districts, and so we may be back for a vote in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to board committee reports. I will start off with curriculum.
You're meeting them tomorrow.
We're meeting tomorrow. Okay, all right.
We had a nice update last month. That was.
We had finance.
Finance, discussed food and nutrition. We have some very interesting innovations now. We actually have meatless meals, which is incredible, something we never did before. We have tremendous participation. Part of this has to do with the ruling about free and reduced lunch and breakfast for everyone, which is wonderful, so people are really participating. We also talked about the transportation and National Express and what we're going to do in terms of next year and whether we continue with that. We talked about our summer food options and how well that was done. So, it was really a very good finance meeting.
And then we had.
PTA Council.
Yeah.
Please, onto the PTA Council. We had a meeting on October 27th that Jessica ran via Zoom, and there is so much happening. Riley and Taryn had touched on a few of the programs that we're running, from tag sales to dances to 5Ks. So, so much is happening in our elementary schools, and our PTA presidents are incredibly busy, from the walk to bike, the bike to walk to school day. That was a great turnout. They had talked about the number of people joining the PTA, which I think Eastview had hit a record, or Highlands, what?
It was the middle school.
The middle school, yeah, had hit a record and got recognized by the national, by the state PTA for their membership, which is very impressive. We had great committee reports from our Teachers' Union Association, our enrichment and curriculum, SEPTA, and our free book fair that's coming up in May. Yes, and I just, there was just so much going on at that meeting. It was just so impressive to listen to the PTA Council as well. And one thing I just want to mention, that you mentioned, was the One Way Plains City Planning Community input that you had. I think it'd be great if we can get our PTAs involved in that as well. But a lot happening, and I will see you next month.
Their first one's coming up soon, right?
I think it was.
Over 18.
Yeah.
But there's a couple, I think, of security agents that were.
Yeah.
What they call them during 18.
Okay. Okay, great.
And if I could just jump in for a minute? I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting when I said that I had nothing to report out on. Wasn't true. I forgot about, I'm still jet-lagged. I was able to go into Sue Brumer's class at the high school, class on government policy, and it's something that I really relish going into the schools and haven't been able to do it during the pandemic. And we had a robust discussion. I just, I talked about policy and Board of Ed, but we had a really robust discussion about government, about policy. It's just wonderful seeing our students thinking, and it was first period, and they were up. So, it was, it was a great experience. So, thank Ms. Brumer for inviting me, and just, I wanted to report that out.
Thank you. Do we have anything for special ed? Or you guys are meeting?
No, we met last week. Okay. So, I can mention that we talked about budget, and budgeting in this school district takes place over years and months, and so we are looking forward in the 2223 year for the integrated co-teaching at George Washington, serving grades K through 5. We're looking forward to adding a secondary instructional coach at the, at the secondary level. They've been sharing between the middle school and the high school, one instructional coach who has been spread extremely thin. Lots of work to be done. Also, the addition of some pupil personnel staff, psychologists, clerical position. There's been some exploration of school-based health clinics, professional development, which is going to be aligned with the science of teaching and special education, which has really been a focus this year, and that will expand next year. Our sales students, some of them have been in the program at Westchester Community College, which has been fabulous. There were three students this year. We're looking forward to expanding to five, and their program focuses on nutrition, leisure, personal finances, and the Serve Safe program, which has to do with food service. And finally, we had some reports on professional development from Election Day, which included PD on restorative circles to support building community within our schools, data-driven instruction, universal design, and updated standardized assessments for executive functioning.
Anything else to report out on? I can just, I'll just close out on our human resources. Meeting was all confidential and, you know, and we reviewed documents related accordingly, which are also confidential. But, but we did meet, and we do review. Does anyone else have anything to add to anything else? Okay, well, now we're almost to adjournment. I want to thank John Shepherd and John Miss Savage for taping us as usual and making it seem easy, and we know it's not. Thank you for that. And just a very, 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 you know, just wishing you all, your families, extended families, students, schools, everyone you come in contact with, to really have a nice holiday, nice Thanksgiving holiday. Be safe, be careful, and come back ready to work off that turkey. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a wonderful holiday break.
Thanks, everybody.